Six P M. I'd like to call to order the regular planning and zoning in the store commission meeting of Thursday, September seventh, twenty twenty-three. With that, Franco, would you take?
Member Ria's brother is absent. Myers.
Here.
Feck.
Here.
Kruger.
Here.
Stannick.
Yes.
Scarpelli.
Here.
And Chair Brunner.
Here. Okay, with the forum met, we'll move on to our first item of business, which will be the approval of the minutes. So can I have a motion to approve or deny the minutes or comments to make amendment?
I motion to approve.
Okay.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, any discussion?
No.
Okay.
Okay, Myers.
Yes.
Feck.
Yes.
Kruger.
Yes.
Stannick.
Yes.
Scarpelli.
Yes.
And Brunner.
Yes. Okay, on to our next item, a public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment on an agenda or non-agenda item? Seeing none, we will move on to new business. Our first item of new business is a public hearing regarding the request of a special use to allow for a used only motor vehicle dealer as described in section one five seven zero five zero F one G four of the zoning ordinance located at four five five East Main Street, East Dundee, I L six zero one one eight in the B two community business district. Could I have a motion to open the public hearing for this request?
I'll make a motion that we open the public hearing for to allow for a special use for used motor vehicle dealer as described in section one fifty-seven dot oh five oh F one G four of the zoning ordinance located at four fifty-five East Main Street, East Dundee, Illinois, in the B two community district, business district.
I'll second it.
Okay, member Myers.
Yes.
Feck.
Yes.
Kruger.
Yes.
Stannick.
Yes.
Scarpelli.
Yes.
And Brunner.
Yes. So before we hear from the applicant who is here tonight, which is fantastic, Franco, did we get any phone calls, emails, any comments on this?
No, nothing.
Okay, so then I would like to ask anyone from the applicant to come up and describe your approach. Anyone who speaks will need to be sworn in, so if everyone might speak, we could swear everyone in right now. And then also make sure when speaking, you always come up to the diets here and speak into the mic.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, come on, raise your right hand, state your names.
Kevin Bruning.
And you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Okay.
Fantastic.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Kevin Bruning, and I'm an attorney, and I'm here on behalf of my client, Mr. Naim Katum. We are asking your consideration of his application for special use permit to allow the conversion of a former medical office into a used car dealership. We believe this conversion will not only be beneficial to the community, but also have positive impact on the city's revenue through increased sales tax. We believe it provides economic stimulus. The proposed conversion will introduce a thriving business into the community, it will create employment opportunities and stimulate growth. As a used car dealership, it will attract customers from both within the community and from outside of the community, generating increased traffic to the community and influx of potential buyers, not only for the used cars that will be sold by my client, but also to the surrounding businesses, retail, restaurant, things of that nature, while people are here visiting the village of East Dundee. We believe it will increase the revenue of the village through sales tax revenue and through the sales of the vehicles and the accessories related to the vehicles. We don't think that it will have any negative impact on the neighborhood whatsoever. The structure is not going to be changed. We won't disrupt any of the current uses in the neighborhood. The property will be adequately landscaped and well-maintained, will ensure that it remains aesthetically pleasing, and will comply with all of the parameters that are imposed upon the business by the village. Traffic and parking considerations will not be affected at all. We'll use the same parking lots that are there now. The parking lots may be improved with asphalt or seal coating and then striped to make look better than they are now, so it'll actually look better than it is. The lower parking lot will be used to display the vehicles that are for sale, and the upper parking lot will be used for employees and customers that visit the used car dealership. Mr. Katum is very interested in the village, he will seek to participate actively in the community's activities. He will provide immediate and prompt feedback to any questions that he might have from any of the members of the community, and he'll work with the community to make this a good partnership so that his business and the community can thrive through his efforts. Be happy to take any questions that you might have, and Mr. Katum is here to answer any questions you would like to ask with him individually.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from members of the board? You gonna do any work on cars there?
Not, not, not really.
No one changes?
We outsource the work.
Goals strictly sales. Good deal, mysterious, thanks.
Will there be any additional lighting that be installed, other than what's existing right now?
Maybe down the road in the future, depending on, I don't know what, which shape is the building or the park, so check it and we'll get it. Definitely, we'll put some light in the future.
Okay, so.
Do you own the building?
Yes, I'm going to purchase the building.
You're going to purchase?
It's under, it's under contract.
Yes, under contract.
Okay. Do you, what renovations, if any, do you have planned for the, for the building?
Well, you know, we expected it, my son, I, my son, he got the experience, and you know, they're there, and there is nothing, you know, we can be done at this moment, and that's about it, so, but deeply, we don't know what it means, but what seems like it's in good shape, the building.
Okay. Okay, so one of the interesting things about this property is the pretty significant grade differential between the east and west ends. So I know you're saying you'll be displaying your cars in the lower parking lot, how are you gonna manage safely getting people from your office down there, especially in bad weather?
There is stairs, you know, that can go down from the office to the area where we just mail our cars, and plus, you know, it's not gonna create too much traffic, we don't have no high speed drivers. I have a business, you know, similar, it's the same kind of business. We maybe sometimes we get a customer, maybe two a day, maybe three, and sometimes, you know, most days we don't get so, our average about fifteen to twenty-five cars come up, so it's not gonna be an issue, you know, managing.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, you know, generally, when you look at lots, right, it's a, it's a flat, easy to walk area, and this, this is not necessarily an easy to walk around area. You know, that's, that's just my, my take on this, and this space specifically being used for, you know, a, a business that requires the customers to be walking around outside. I mean, a lot of businesses don't require that. This, you know, I assume it's fifteen customers, but they will want to look at the cars before they buy them.
We have multiple entrances, you know, to the building, over to the site.
Did you consider, like, any type of ADA compliance for, for people with wheelchairs getting down to the cars and up to your office? Or people on crutches or whatnot? I think this is something that the staff brought up as a, as a concern, you know, making it handicap accessible for people using your station.
Here's from the north side, I believe, that's, it's a lot, there's a lot of weight that's taken to the floor.
So like a sidewalk around the back?
It's not a sidewalk, it's like a street, you know, so it's a base for, it's like a, you know.
So if someone was looking at a car in the parking lot and were in a wheelchair, they'd go up the street and then come into your office?
Yeah, if they come from, let's say, from the east side of the building, and if they wanna go down, they can take, take themselves to the north side and go down, you know, wheelchair, you know, I don't think it's gonna be a issue.
Okay.
If there's no stairs, nothing in the way.
Mm-hmm. Also, you said you're gonna keep the building, I see this lot has a bunch of trees in the back, there's no plan to mess with the trees?
At this time, you know, to me, it's a big project, I'm gonna leave it as is, but in the future, if I expand my business, definitely I will present, present my time to the city before I do that.
Yeah, I, you know, I'm considering the, the current property owner back there.
Yeah, it's like a forest, I must, yeah, I like it, but.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I wanna start a business somewhere and, and with a distance.
Yeah. And so, so, did you, I know we have a lot of businesses, you know, offering cars on twenty-five.
Sure.
And is there a reason that this place, is it just because it's available?
Yeah, I tell you why, I do have a business in town, it's called the Calm Plus Auto Sales, and I've been doing this for the past six years, all six years, for the city of East Dundee, but we are on the uncorporated, uh, incorporated side, okay, on Route twenty-five.
Okay, like south?
Yeah, south of Haggins, south of Haggins, correct. So across from Ford, if you know where that's.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so anyway, I've been there six years, and nothing but, you know, you know the end doors, most of them, well, there's some of them are not necessary, most, some of them, they see, they're doing good, they want a piece of that, you know, whatever it is, we, we just keep him higher than the rent of house, and nothing but harassment, and we have unwanted issues with them, so I said the best, you know, my thoughts, the best case for me, just to buy my own building, and the business I do for the best is serious, I don't want to lose it, so in case if I get, you know, affected from there, I have more location to, to go, whatever.
Okay.
To stay in business.
Yeah. So any other questions for the applicants? Good. Okay, thank you very much. With that, I would entertain a motion to close the, I mean.
Before we close?
Yes, you can in the public meeting, yes.
Before we close, I have a really great parallel who helps me with these items, her name is Melissa Flowers, and she provided me with this wonderful survey that we were indicating we'd like to see before we close, so I'd like to tender a copy of this. Is it okay if I bring it to you?
Yeah, 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 I think we've seen, we've had this shared with us.
Do you need it?
Let's, let's take a quick one.
Yeah, okay. So there's, you've made some updates to it, or?
No, I, it's the same, but.
Yeah.
This was when I talked to Melissa a couple of weeks ago, and I asked for it.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is it.
Okay.
We just wanted to make sure that you, we're able to see the full copy.
There you go.
So during.
Thank you so much.
Correct, during the public hearing, we can have everyone, anyone talk, so, yes, Jeff.
And thank you very much for your time and consideration, we really appreciate it.
Jeff will need to get sworn in and work together. Yeah, you're right, exactly.
Please state your name, raise your right hand. Jeff Linehan. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
I, I just wanted to let everybody know here that something to add into your considerations is, East Dundee is a town of less than three square miles, and we have no less than seven used car lots, seven used car dealerships in this town. I question whether or not in the long term, an eighth is gonna benefit us, especially at that location, considering the fact two other interests have been made for that location that I think would better suit the town. Also, I've talked to our building inspector, and there is gonna need to be some significant changes to that building, the removal of the portico being one of them, so it's gonna take the face of that building and change it dramatically, and so, right on the main drag there like that on seventy-two, I just think that there's, it needs to be considered whether there are better uses or not, so I believe there is, so I would like to just do so.
Thank you.
Okay, have that from the engineer, we don't necessarily need at the public hearing, that could be.
You could have it during your discussion.
In the same way, the fire marshal.
Good idea.
Yeah, okay, so could I have a motion then to close the public hearing at this?
So moved.
Second.
Myers.
Yes.
Feck.
Yes.
Kruger.
Yes.
Stannick.
Yes.
Scarpelli.
Yes.
Brunner.
Yes. So you have some questions for the village engineer?
Yeah, so Joe, the, I, I know there's two ingress and egress points on Route seventy-two, there's also an ingress egress point on Linden. And I did have comments, but then I went over and took a better look at the site. I was thinking closing or putting a barricade closure on, on the Easter lean war one, however, I'm remembering back in the day when you used to be able to drive from the lower parking lot up around the south side of it, but taking from I dot must have eliminated that.
Yeah.
So I see that, I see why the second entrance is necessary. Concerns about the, the straight-in parking on the upper lot, two concerns, the one is is that I don't know that it's really deep enough, the back of my truck was hanging off into the drive lane, and then trying to back out of there if there's a car next to me would seem next to impossible. Going back forty years ago, when the restaurant was there, it, it would seem like angle parking, and angle parking since you're pulling in, heading north on the drive, would seem like one-way northerly traffic with angle parking would be more appropriate on that front area, but then also it would seem like the, the curb, while they've got parking stops there, the wall then that keeps them from going down to the lower lot only seems to be another two or three inches more, and a big truck could easily, I mean, I could have driven over and fallen off the wall, so I, I guess I'm just wondering if you, if you felt that there should be any type of, whether they use wooden timbers to sink in the ground to prevent that, or, I mean, to me, a guardrail would look tacky on, on top of the, the brick wall that's there, the retaining wall, but did you see any need for any type of?
I haven't reviewed the site.
Oh, you did?
For geometrics, no.
Okay, okay.
That's something we can look at, but they're not requesting any variances from zoning, so they would have to, they would have to meet the minimum requirements for the parking lot dimensions and any safety issues.
Okay.
Would the ADA thing be part of that as well, or? And then, is that?
And I would assume that the, the ramp on the northern end going around down to the lower lot, all of that would have to then meet landscape, and do we require hard paved surfaces? Because there's a lot up on the northern end of the building, the north end of the building going around where the garbage is and that, a lot of that is crumbling and completely deteriorated asphalt, would they, they would have to bring that up to code by repaving it? Because I, I know there was a recommendation that they seal coat and striped the lot, but to me, a lot of that parking lot is well beyond seal coating and striping.
And that would be the building department as far as maintenance of your property.
Okay.
So if there's issues there, you would have to push that.
Okay.
That's it, thank you.
And then our fire marshal, if you could come up to the microphone so we can get you on the. So, and could you state your name?
Mark Chorgy, Fire Marshal.
Fantastic, so there was quite an attachment in here in regards to this, this property, and there was a lot of talk about turning radius and, you know, what you would need in order to support this. Do you know if it needs thieves already, or are these, are there changes required?
No, currently it doesn't, we have no access to that building whatsoever. The road to the north with shambles, I don't even know if it'll hold the weight of our engine, let alone an ambulance. The overhang, if we wanted to come off seventy-two, is so low, we can't even fit ours in this, so you're talking delay EMS response, we'd have to go into the parking lot, trucking down from the building, delay fire response, we'd have to park again in the parking lot and stretch all the way to the building, it's probably has no spurs on top of that. It does have a firearm system, it's been fairly good, it's gonna need to get upgraded, depending on what they decide to do within side destruction. Changes over the years, prior to my arrival, we've had changes, there's no way we can even access that building right now.
Yeah.
So it would require a turnaround if you came in off of Linden, but if they're willing to, this is what I was talking to the chief, raise that overhang or get rid of it, where we can come in off seventy-two and just exit straight off, we'll just variance the turnaround for them, because that's gonna, I don't even know if they have room up there for a turnaround.
Yeah. And so this, this type of issue, would this happen with any type of business that went in there, or is it different because of it being?
It could be any type of business, believe it or not, yeah, yeah, it's been altered so much over the years, and it wasn't brought to code when it was altered, that we're kind of left over at right now.
Yeah. Would you consider this type of business any worse or, you know, higher risk or lower risk than, than other businesses?
As long as you doesn't do any auto repairs.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's.
If it's sales, it's a little different in a business office.
Yeah. So no car storage up there?
Well, I guess that would be my question, it is an automobile dealership, not new, but used, and I know one of the recommendations is that they be the only tenant in it, so to utilize all of that space, did you guys consider in your review that they would actually be pulling cars into a showroom, creating, creating a showroom and actually putting actual cars in the showroom?
No, I, I did not, because that would go with the alternate they said they weren't gonna do at this time, if they were gonna alter and submit a floor plan with a showroom.
Okay.
Then it would require a little bit more upgrades.
Okay.
As far as the exterior and access would still not change, the only thing if they were gonna build a showroom, I would suggest spurs at that point.
Okay.
Because you're now making it a storage classification as opposed to a business office.
Right.
And then for access down to the parking lot, is that something that would be fine for you guys, I mean, if you were having to put out car fires?
Oh, no, that parking lot's fine right now.
Okay.
We, I threw a note in there to maintain a twenty-foot width, because I didn't, there was no plan on how many of their exit planning and storing, if they're gonna redesign the lot layout with striding, so if they're gonna try to cram more in there, we'd have to have a twenty-foot width, as of right now, the way it's currently designed, we can go through and through Linden, and it's.
Okay. Would you guys consider a parking lot of cars higher risk than just a parking lot that was for a business?
No, it's exterior, as long as it's not on top of the building or next to the building, where you have a risk of transferring, there's a significant gap between the parking lot and the buildings on.
Okay, yeah, exceptionally significant. Cool, anybody else have anything for, for, for stepstone? Great, thank you very much, I'm very hopeful. So do anybody, does anybody else have any questions that they would like to have asked before we start? Going through, I think, the recommendation, which is what I'd like to.
Fire Marshal, what, what would the minimum height be if, if they didn't want to get rid of the canopy but wanted to raise it, what would the minimum height be to clear your engines?
Thirteen-six protocol.
Okay, thank you. No, but I, I think that, I think it's only about seven feet right now.
Yeah.
Somebody has gone through there that's over seven feet, the boards have been hit a few times.
Okay, cool, so, so if we look in our packet, the, the board, I mean, the staff gave us some recommendations on if we do recommend approval, things that we should consider, and, and I'd like to talk through these, so we, we have a feeling of, of what, what we think might be appropriate if we want to include any of these, or all. So the first one is a specially used should only take, would only be able to take, wouldn't be able to take effect until a six-foot tall privacy fence is installed by the applicant on the property along the north and east boundary of the property adjacent to the residential properties. You know, I think that's a, that's a, you know, what I'd consider a compromise for folks who have a pretty light use there right now with the medical office, you know, to something that will have vehicles, especially if we look at tearing out trees later on down the road, so I think that's kind of in that category. Does anybody have any comments on, on that one, you think that's?
Well, on the same light, the reason why I asked for the lighting, you know, we wouldn't want any extra high lighting that would affect the neighborhood around it.
Yes.
There is residents around there.
Yeah.
Something to that effect, you know, we could put in there.
Right, right, I mean, there's definitely.
Maintain the tree line and back of the, you know, back of the building.
Yeah, well, we, we definitely, as a village, have a, you know, in our comprehensive plan, talk about, you know, keeping green spaces, and this is a nice green thing in our downtown area at the moment, so, yeah.
Outside lighting wouldn't be permitted on, on the property between the hours of nine P M. and six A M.
Okay.
Then the next one, no more than thirty-one vehicles shall be offered for sale at the property at a given time, and I, Franco, was that just to control the number of cars?
That was what was Chris calculated as available space when you take into account employee parking.
Okay. So having a limit like that makes sense, I think that also helps with some of the fire department's concerns, you know, in regards to access to the lot, you know, that, it's a big lot, I think thirty-one, from my layman's perspective, doesn't seem like it would oversaturate it. So every vehicle on the spot must be in a parking space, so I assume that means it must be striped and marked with. Yeah, okay.
That's later, the applicant must seal coat and strike.
Yeah, let's own.
Yeah. So security cameras must be installed, that's just.
That's just best practices.
Okay.
Big lots that we have, or most businesses, we try to get down security.
Yeah, so as I say, these really, anybody jump out and add comments. Damaged or wrecked vehicles shall not be allowed on the property. I think if we do include this one, we need to have a better term, term for damaged. I think wrecked is a, you know, a, a, is a term that we can understand, but damaged, I mean, you know, is a dent, a damage, you know, we can, definitely we'll have a used car with some, a paint scrape or, you know, a little dent in it, right?
Yeah, I mean, it might, might be better to leave that, but then further define it that only employees' cars, customers' cars, and cars that are actually for sale would be allowed.
How about totaled or wrecked vehicles, would that be allowed on operating for storage?
Yeah, they must be operational.
Yeah, yes, that sounds good.
Yeah, well, that, that totaled or wrecked, I mean, there's a title thing that happens, right? Where you have that, like, what is it, a wreck title?
Salvage title.
Salvage title, yeah, so none of that.
Where would the vehicles be repaired that are going to be for sale?
Outsourced.
Is it?
They said they were outsourced.
Outsourced.
What's that?
They said they were gonna outsource it, so.
That could be done there.
Yeah, so they come in saleable condition.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, or if they buy one, they drop, drop ship it to wherever it's gonna get repaired.
Yeah, so that, that goes on pretty much number six.
One more thing that we could add is vehicles must not be parked on the grass around the property, I'm not sure if that's.
I mean, there was, they have to be parked in a parking space.
Right, parking space, it says.
And in town, grass does not qualify as a parking space.
Number three, it says parking space.
Vehicle unloading, loading and unloading shall occur entirely on the property and shall not occur on Linden Avenue, Main Street, or any other roads, this would be like when they're coming on flatbeds.
Exactly.
That they have to.
Or any, like, tow truck or whatever.
Yeah, and this is mainly because we don't want to disrupt Route seventy-two traffic.
Of course.
Yeah. Makes a ton of sense, seal, seal coat and stripe, makes sense. Main office cannot be subleased outside of the special use permit business, and what was the reasoning behind that?
It's such a large space that we wanted to make sure there wasn't any subleasing going on, so the, we'd word it as the special use permit is granted to the applicant only, and no other use associated with the main office building located on the property is approved, so no subleasing.
Okay. Any, I mean, why no subleasing, though?
Such a large property. Such a large property.
Yeah, I, I still. The site should be accessible, assess to determine if site improvements are required under the American Disability Act. Is that enough, so like if the, if it, if it's found that it needs to be improved, they would have to do it?
Yeah.
According to our building code?
Yeah, exactly.
So, so we don't.
So that would be under the building review, like after this, there'd be a building review process.
Yeah, okay. The site parking lot lighting be improved to meet the village code standards for the proposed use? I think you talked about that, at least, and I mean, there's an intensity and a, we've talked enough about, I think, parking lot lighting here in other, other meetings, so. The site landscaping be improved to meet village code standards, so that's just green space per parking lot?
Yeah.
Yeah, they don't need like a detention area or anything from this. And then buying and selling secondhand passenger cars and trucks are, is the only thing that's permitted, is there, I mean, that's, so they don't do motorcycles?
Yeah, RVs, boats, semi trucks.
Commercial vehicles, yeah.
Okay.
Can they sell new cars?
No, no, it's a special use only for used motor vehicles only right here.
And then the fire protection condition shall be met and attached to ordinance. I think pretty generic. So, once again, if we include, remember when, when, we include in our recommendation, if these did get put into the, the actual special use, if they broke these, their special use could be voided. That, that's how any conditions like this would work. So, any, any questions on, on that?
I, I think it's a given, but obviously they would have to meet all current building codes and standards.
Yeah.
For, for the site and the, and the property. I guess one other consideration, I would like to see if, if we go ahead and make a recommendation to the village board to grant this, would be, and you know, I think we tried to do this with that, with the folks at, on the Healy Road, the Healy Road LLC, but I think the attorney found it to be legal, would be some type of a temporary or a, a condition that if they were to, I think they're gonna have to do paving around that, the bend that goes from the upper lot to the lower lot, and some paving up on the north side of the building before they can open. I, I would believe Chris would find that, but after a year or eighteen months or something, something that says that that entire lower lot would have to be repaved with two inches of bituminous surface. Is that something we can craft in there, Franco, that, can we? And then if, if they choose not to do that, then the special use has.
What is the lower level, right now, the existing pavement?
It, oh, it's, it's, it's a parking lot, but it's, it's in rough shape, I mean.
See, I think the condition is the whole entire.
Yeah, it says it.
Property must be seal coated.
Well, right, but, but seal coating is really not adding structure, I mean, there's, there's, to me, if I was a customer going to a lot like that, I'd be very skeptical of buying a car there just based on the condition of the parking lot.
Maybe perhaps have the building inspector review the condition of the pavement.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, and were you getting at this as well, that there might be additional requirements for a parking lot that has just cars sitting on it, not moving for months?
Yeah, I.
Like in terms of thickness?
There might be, I mean, that would be more of a question for Joe Heinsen, I, I.
I don't think that.
I don't know that that, that makes a difference, it just, to me, the appearance does, the appearance, the aesthetics appearance is more of an issue to me than the, the soundness of the.
Oh, right. Well, and we do know it's like a two-piece messed up looking thing, right?
Yeah.
Because they had like tore out a bunch to build a building that never came and then patched it back up.
Right, right.
So it's, yeah, two colors, very much.
But I, I thought we had, I thought we had done something on one of the truck storage lots, or made a recommendation to the village board that they could use the asphalt grindings for a period of two or three years, and then after that, they would have to pave the parking lot.
Yeah, but I think that's because it's, it was undeveloped property.
Right, correct, correct. But I, I'm just wondering if a condition similar to that could be put on, that if they choose, if, if the building inspector believes that the current surface is sound enough to permit the business to open, and then the business is there for a year, eighteen months, two years. I mean, I can see not wanting to put the petitioner through a, I mean, to repave that lot, you're probably looking at close to a hundred thousand bucks.
I think that'll just fall under general maintenance enforcement of parking lot standards that we have throughout town for everyone.
Okay.
Okay, any more questions on these topics? Okay, so what I'd like to do next then is go through the findings of fact, and we can consider what has been put in front of us from the proposal from staff. I think no one really disagreed with any of those restrictions. So, so remember, when we're going through this, our job is to look at this application against really these, these questions. You know, we did get some comments from, from the, you know, from Mr. Linum about some things that we can't consider. But, you know, it's, you know, we're, we're looking at use, we're looking at, you know, how it fits with our comprehensive plan, and does it meet these other needs here in the finding of fact. So the first one is, the use is not injurious to the use and enjoyment of the property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, not sustaining substantially diminished and impaired property values within the neighborhood. So, I think this one is one, you know, given the neighboring residential, and the kind of light business that is there right now, which I don't think is very distracting. I think this special use would add additional, you know, an additional detrimental experience to that. It's, I think it's up to us to discuss, how, how much is that? But I know if I was living there, this is, that would be considered a downgrade, as being my neighbor, over what I think is presently there.
Sure.
So we can, we can talk about that, we can consider, does it, would it, would it lower their property values, having a parking lot right next to it? Especially if those trees were torn out right next to the, the house to the north.
Very much so. You know, if there was a medical office before, you had, how many cars there, maybe ten out of ten? Just a couple of clients or people who are there every day, this is gonna bring in up to thirty-one cars?
Yeah, and, and we should compare it against other permitted uses in the area, which is all like light, commercial, restaurants, things like that. So the special use, you know, purpose is to say, we don't want to just guarantee this here, because it's, you know, a lot of things are going on in the area. And so we should be evaluating this specific place for this specific use. The purpose of the special use is to make sure we don't, you know, for places that can't have it because of their specific situation, we, we don't need to, we don't have to, have to put it there. So, so here, is there any other comments, what, do people?
I see your point. Although I, I guess I could pose a, something a hundred and eighty degrees of that, in that this business is gonna open, I would assume, at eight or nine in the morning, and close at eight or nine in the evening. And then the cars are just gonna sit there and hopefully nothing happens. You put a restaurant there that has a bar, and you've got disorderly people coming out at eleven or midnight or whatever, making noise, so. I may, if providing the lighting didn't spill over into my yard and disrupt my, disrupt me from a lighting standpoint, and given from where the current residential is in proximity to this, I might consider the car dealer, or the car lot, to be more advantageous to me as a resident than some establishment where there are people coming and going at hours.
Yeah, I mean, there's obviously gonna be comparisons we need to make. The only one we can make for sure right now is what's there, what was there, what's going to be there. Which, it's medical office to this. We don't, because we don't, we really don't know what, what it, what it could be, and there's definitely a lot of those things than, than what this would be. And that's why we need to, we need to think, like, as a group, is it above a threshold to say it is injurious? You know?
That's a good point, though, you know, because if you put a bar restaurant there, people are gonna be leaving there at ten eleven at night, maybe midnight.
Yeah.
This would be quiet, other than light pollution, but there's no lights there.
Right.
Right now.
I mean, a bar would also have to get, you know, a later license and things like that. You know, we have Brianna's right there, which is close to it too. It could be another.
Yeah, exactly.
There, there's no rowdiness there, you know?
And then, I'm just thinking, we're, we're changing the use of this, this, this lot, this building wasn't ever supposed to be a car dealership. It wasn't ever supposed to be a medical building, it was a restaurant back in the day, but we are, or alter on this, we're an office, right?
Yeah.
It's changing, we're changing, we're changing that.
So, so then the next one, and, and let's continue talking about this one as we talk also about number five, which is, oh, go.
So what would be the response to that?
Oh, we're not going to, we haven't decided.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And, because I think what Charlie was saying here, and some of the things we're talking about, it's, it's, one and five are the two that I think are the ones that can be the most applicable to this specific situation. So one, with the property value situation, and then five, which is how is the proposed use in harmony with the purposes, goals, objectives, policies, and standards of the Village of East End D comprehensive plan? The zoning ordinance and other planned program ordinance adopted are under consideration pursuant to the official notice by the village. So, this one, we should be able, we should use the, the comprehensive plan to help us with our decisions. Now, our comprehensive plan is from two thousand and two, it's pretty out of date, and, you know, reading through it, it doesn't talk much about this part of our, our village. It, it, it lumps the whole area up with the Dominics, the old Dominics thing, and really only talks about that part. It says, we want to develop this and make all the green stuff and all of that. This part down here, it's, it really doesn't say anything. So, so we really don't have a lot of direct guidance. We do have the guidance with, you know, you know, harmony, synergy, you know, being, considering green space, stuff like that, you know, being attractive area. Now, I think, things have changed a lot since two thousand and two, you know, we do have a very bustling, like, downtown area. And I think, you know, in a, in a future comprehensive plan, I very much want to recommend this type of business isn't there. You know, because we want to grow our downtown to have that be more of a walkable, you know, you know, extended area with synergistic businesses. But that isn't something we have right now. So we have to look at the much more general, you know, harmony. You know, there's, you know, a lot that can be said about, you know, there is an existing used car dealership up on King Street, right?
Yes.
So, I, I just said a lot there, I really like you here. Some other people's thoughts on that, but.
Yeah, is, is it the plan to have a car dealership there? I, I don't know if it is, I, I don't know, I think that there's a, a really good use of land up by where Dundee Ford was. I don't know if he's in the same building as the Mustang Restoration Place, but those, it's what it's built for up there.
Yeah.
I think it's adequate up there, it's unfortunate that he doesn't own that building, I wish he did.
Yeah.
But I don't know if it's the right area for that, just, you know, my thoughts.
Yeah.
I think that car dealerships are up there for a reason, they're close I ninety, somebody coming from any other suburb to go look at their car. But coming down into our town, I think that's time to enjoy, walk.
Yes.
I think it's a great area for car dealerships up on Route twenty-five.
And we have heard of other potential developments across, directly across the street. Those have been presented, I don't know, I don't, there's nothing in progress there, but those have always been considered like residential there across the street from.
From the DeAngelo.
Yeah, yeah, if it's gonna be something, or it's gonna be a park.
Yeah, they, and the, the village did go to lengths to actually acquire the original Jim Kelly Ford, which then became Spring Hill Ford. A little bit further east on the same side of the street. And the village acquired that property to tear the building down and to get rid of the automotive use, and did, we did create an automotive district which is out on Route twenty-five. So, so the, while the comp plan, and it is quite old now, twenty, twenty-one years old. I remember.
Yeah.
Yeah. I was a trustee at the time that it was approved, and, and what I tend to share is, is that there, there was, there was a push, while it wasn't adequately spelled out, there was a push to remove all of the more intense commercial uses along Route seventy-two because of the fact that they immediately border residential properties, and it was supposed to be a, more of a residential business district.
So, okay, is that, so that's a comment that you're making from being a trustee when the comprehensive plan is.
Yes.
Okay, so, so that's a very significant reference point.
So right now, all the businesses around that street, except for Brianna's, is not.
Yeah, and.
It's a car dealership, it's a cleaning, it's a, you know, the car.
There's a floor, a floor old place.
Right, yeah, yeah.
And that's a, that's the end of your, like, walk.
Yeah.
If you're gonna, you know what I mean? If you want to go buy something or do a service, and then you have the sun, that's it.
Yeah.
Then you gotta go around the corner.
Right.
Right.
You've got, you've got the used car in Main Street more, and then you've got the two, you've got the two auto body.
Right.
Yes, right.
Establishments, but the, I can tell you the thought twenty-one years ago was to.
It was good.
To push them out into the industrial.
Yeah, and I think that makes sense.
I think that's still relevant.
Yeah. Okay. So, okay, well, let's, let's then answer this one. So, the, the, number five. So how is this proposed special use in harmony with the purposes, goals, objectives, policies, and standards of the Village of East End D comprehensive plan? The zoning ordinance and any other planned program ordinance adopted are under consideration pursuant of the official notice by the village. Do we want to go with what they say, or do we want to say it is not in line?
I would say it's that one, I would agree.
Other people?
I would agree with that as well, that's that one.
Okay. So, not in line? Okay, and then let's go back up to one. This use is not injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, nor substantially diminished and impaired property values within the neighborhood. Do we believe it, it is injurious or not injurious?
As is known, it's not injurious. I wouldn't think so, but if it's gonna be a car dealership, the lights have to be off at nine PM, right?
Yeah.
So, if that, if that's, I was gonna do, it would not be injurious.
So you think it can be a car dealership as proposed and not be injurious?
Well, just with light pollution, if it's gonna be off.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a parking lot full of cars anyways, I'm just thinking, you might have.
Yeah, yeah. So, so you're okay with the yes, that this is not injurious?
I would, I would say yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, that appears to be the consensus. Okay. Now we'll go on to number two. This use will not impede the normal and orderly development and the improvement of the surrounding property for uses permitted in the district. I don't think it will, mainly because they're not really making any changes.
Off unloading cars, you're not gonna have a semi truck parked on Route seventy-two, or?
Yeah, I would look at this, yeah, yeah, that could be that, that, yeah, I would, I, I look at this one more being like, if you made this development, it would make it so it would be harder for people to develop stuff next to it. Like, if you put it, this into its crazy noisy, now there's a bunch of businesses that can't deal with noise that can't be next to it.
Right.
Right, that we maybe would want in that same area. But it's cars parking in a parking lot, right? I don't think it would prevent any other business by it, and it has the auto body dealership.
I would argue that it could.
Okay.
Prevent businesses, because, I mean, I firmly believe some of that does not develop because you've got two body shops there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And if, if we had a, a auto dealership, is that going to delay or prolong?
True.
Somebody from bringing in neighborhood business across the street or further up the road, whereas if, if the village should condemn the people, but if they were able to condemn and move them.
Yes.
Move them out into the industrial park, I know that there's been talk about trying to get rid of lionized trucking down here and move them out. Is if all those types of things could happen, then maybe people with more of a neighborhood commercial development would come in. But they don't want to come in next to an auto dealership and body repair.
Okay, I think that's a very good point.
So, I, I could go either way with it, or just be kind of middle of the road, that given, given the site, given what's next to it, that it's not injurious, but it could be injurious to meeting the comp plan of neighborhood commercial in that location.
So what do, what do people think about what Frank just said there?
Yeah, I'm kinda on the fence with both. If, you know, if the lighting doesn't affect the neighborhood around it, um, you know, it wouldn't, wouldn't take away, but however, you know, are we gonna develop that whole line with car-related businesses, or is that gonna be...
Yeah, no, and I think we don't want that, you know, and I think I'd definitely recommend with the new comp plan into the board that we say we want all car stuff on, on 25.
Right, correct.
You know, just to start grouping our things together. And I mean, and truly, you know, this is a two-lot development, right? I mean, it could really be two businesses. And that might work better, because then you don't have to walk between the two up and, up and down the hill.
Yeah.
You know, and then, you know, to Connie's point, it could be then even more walkable, you know, so...
Yeah, something to consider. I, I would say that's a no, then.
What do we think, then? Do you want to put no for number two?
I mean, I, Franco, it has to be a yes or a no?
These are guides. The findings of fact is what you vote on, but, uh, one, one answer to this is, you guys hit it really hard on that, is the comp plan.
If we break it into, into two parts, if we say, uh...
Comp plan.
Uh, two A being that it's not injur, that it's a yes as to existing uses, but it...
You're overthinking it. I think you're overthinking it.
Okay.
I, I really think that, you know, these are just something for you guys to, like, this...
To guide you.
To guide you in your opinion, but it sounds like me, listening into the PZH's conversation. If it was agreed upon years ago, and you guys agreed with this today, that maybe this isn't the best place for the car dealership, used or new, that the corridor should remain on 25, and that's something that the Village Board, you can recommend to the Village Board for the future comp plan, which staff hopes to do next year.
Right.
That's totally fine to recommend a denial based on that alone. That is huge, that is the whole purpose of having a comp plan and a vision for the future.
Yes.
Uh-huh.
Okay, so, and, and really, yeah, in the end, me going through this is making sure we have the discussion on all this.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's a prompt for the discussion.
Yep.
And I think we're, we're getting to where, so, do you want, do you want to just put it at no?
Yeah.
And then, okay. Adequate utilities, roads, drainage for necessary facilities have been or will be provided. I think we got the yes for that. Adequate measures have been taken to provide ingress and egress, so it's designed to minimize traffic congestion in the public streets, and I believe that's the yes.
Yes.
Okay, so now, um, with that, uh, I think we are prepared to make a, make the motion to...
Well, let's do a motion for the findings of fact.
Okay, we can do that first.
With revisions, so someone, we need to make a motion of the new findings of fact with number two as a no, and number five not in line with the comp plan.
Who would like to make that motion?
Uh, I'll make a motion that we approve the findings of fact for special use as amended, with number two being a no, and number five, uh, finding that it is not, that, uh, that this special use would not be in line with the village's Comprehensive Plan.
I'll second it.
Okay. Myers?
Yes.
Feck?
Yes.
Kruger?
Yes.
Stannick?
Yes.
Scarpelli?
Yes.
And Brunner?
Yes.
Okay, so we got that done, and now we're ready for a motion on, uh, the approval or denial of a recommendation, or a recommendation for approval or denial.
I'll ma, I'll make a motion that we make a recommendation of denial to the Village Board for the special use, uh, at 450 5 East Main Street, Eastundy, Illinois.
Second to that.
Okay, uh, member, excuse me, Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
Commissioner Feck?
Yes.
Kruger?
Yes.
Stannick?
Yes.
Scarpelli?
Yes.
Brunner?
Yes.
So that motion to recommend denial to the Village Board, that'll go before the September 18th Village Board meeting.
Thank you.
Good.
So, and I will say at the Village Board meeting, they can consider more than what we can consider here. So, you know, things like you being a longtime business owner, or that, that type of stuff can be brought up.
And the financial impact. Because we, we don't deal with any financial matters whatsoever at this board.
Yeah. Okay?
So we'll talk, you could email me later, and then we'll talk about you guys coming again to September 18th meeting for the Village Board's vote on this.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, if you guys want to head out, you can.
Yeah, you're free to go, if you wish.
Sorry, took so long. Sorry, took so long.
Chairman Brewer, uh, and, uh, Franco, correct me if I'm wrong, um, when there's a denial, there's no, it, it, would staff still like the findings of fact? Because I, I've always, or well, in the past, we've always done the recommendation, and if it's a recommendation in favor, then the finding of facts come into play, whereas usually if it's a denial, there's, there has not been a need for the hearing for the findings of fact, but we obviously have, in, going through that process, we uncovered some things that I think are gonna be helpful to staff and for everyone here if we get into the redoing of a comp plan next year. So, I, I guess I just wonder, should we hold off the findings of facts conversations until after?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
An approval, or would you like to have them regardless?
Yeah, the findings of fact guide you, and they justify your vote, like we just did right now. So I think it's appropriate to, in a public setting, uh, discuss the reasoning to guide you into your recommendation to the board, and for everybody listening, of why.
Yeah, and I know we've done it differently in previous meetings, or we did the findings of fact afterwards.
Yeah.
But I found that, that it, it's better to do it, we get a better conversation.
I have no problem doing it, I, I just...
Yeah, because you can, you can then kind of get into this, and you'd be like, oh, you know, because this really, you need to vote yes on all of these for you to really say yes. To be like confident with the yes.
Yep.
Um, and so it helps you if you're on the fence, you know, and, you know, and we have a lot of, you know, I know we have a lot of things that push us in, in our different directions, so this to me helps focus us, so, yeah.
Thanks.
We'll sign this right now. Um, and then do we want to make a, um, do we need to make an additional motion in terms of recommendation for including of the comp plan?
Not yet, because we're gonna have public hearings for the comp plan.
Okay.
And when those public hearings come before the PZHC, you could then say, hey, this is the direction you wanna go. This is, these are the slew of recommendations you want to make to the Village Board.
Great, well, it's in the recording now that that's the direction we want, so I'm grateful. Okay, fantastic. Um, okay, so, now on to our second public hearing, uh, which will be a request...
But, I'm sorry, to interrupt, but as part of the memo and the reason why, I can add that snippet in the memo for the Village Board, so they understand where you're coming from.
Yeah, great. Okay, so for our next, uh, set, our next, uh, set of new business, we'll be having a public hearing for a request for a special use to allow for a packaged liquor store as described in section 157050 F1C2 of the zoning ordinance located at 210 Penny Avenue, units GNH Eastundy, Illinois 60118, in the B2 Community Business District. May I have a motion to open, uh, the public hearing on this, uh, property?
A motion to open.
I'll second it.
Okay, Myers?
Yes.
Feck?
Yes.
Kruger?
Yes.
Stannick?
Yes.
Scarpelli?
Yes.
And Brunner?
Yes. Okay, Franco, do we have anybody who sent in anything in regards to this public hearing?
No.
Okay, uh, it looks like we have the petitioners here today, so, um, I believe you heard me say earlier, anyone who wants to speak, come up, we'll get you sworn in, and then just make sure you speak at the microphone.
Okay, and if you're not gonna talk? All right, just raise your right hand and one at a time state your names, please.
I'm gonna just tell, I'm gonna open up. Need this one.
Okay, and you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yeah.
Okay, um, so, would one of you like to then present, uh, your project?
Yeah, so basically, we're just looking to open up a liquor store at that two-time penny.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know, just something for, because of the community around, for liquors, you know, and people want to have liquor store, you know, liquor, and, you know, just looking to, we have experience with liquor stores in other villages, and we think that, you know, it'd be, I think, just helpful, I guess, village will, you know, we can help the village as well, you know, have community events, you know, sponsors, and something that, uh, I think, and obviously, we have the experience to make sure we only sell to, obviously, whatever the laws, you know, any provision, you know, any, uh, make sure we said, you know, follow rules and regulations, and as a village, state, you know, whatever it is.
Cool. Yeah. Okay, um, do we have any questions for the applicants?
Uh, which units in the strip mall is it, were the Daisy's Cafe and the Chiropractor hurt there?
So, first, the end, we're in the, I guess, the second, I think, lunch shop or something?
Yeah.
And so, right next to it.
Okay, okay.
Second, second and third to the south end.
Okay, so the paintball, uh, uh, business remains there, right?
So they moved to, to the end of the...
Yes.
Yeah, they moved to the end and it's the...
Oh, okay, yeah.
So any, any other questions?
I think I'll tell, answer it. If you, if you look at the background summaries, you guys are gonna go for opening up a bar to gaming in there, so you're gonna, you're gonna be serving alcohol and selling it, gonna have a...
Only within the gaming area?
Right, only in the gaming area, yeah. Not, not just...
Because it's, um, a state requirement that you have to have on, on-site consumption with gaming, unless you're a truck stop.
Yeah, it's like, they have to do that at the gas station now, the marathon.
Yeah.
Pardon?
So if you have gaming, you have to be selling...
Pouring.
Pouring, yes.
Yeah, you have to be serving, you have to be serving, serving alcohol and serving food in order to get a gaming license.
Yeah.
So you gotta be drinking.
Yeah. Now, now, you don't have to be drinking when you're playing, but they have to offer it, and it'd be available. But I know what they'll do sometimes is like charge a crazy amount for it, so no one actually buys it.
Sure. The fact that you're...
I think you have to require it.
Yeah.
I think there's a really similar business that, that they're going for, it's in Gilbert's, it's called LV Liquors and stuff, it's, you go in there, you can either purchase alcohol, if you want to hang out game, they have a bar in there, too.
Well, they do just right up on 31 and, uh, 72, I mean, and Huntley, 31 and Huntley, you know, that, uh, the, the Ardenetti Liquors has gaming.
Yeah.
You know, so, and that's gonna be about the same size as this, really.
Sure.
Yeah, other, other comments? I mean, I mean, really, the gaming, I mean, we can see it, um, that's a, I think, a separate issue then for us to necessarily consider. They're not even technically asking for that.
Yeah, this is just a liquor store.
Sure.
Um, and I emailed various questions for Franco, and he passed them on to the attorney in that... So Franco, have we, has the village created a new liquor license especially for these gaming events? Or will, will they, will they receive a, I mean, would anything prohibit them from serving liquor to anybody, even if they're not in the gaming area? Or with the special use, are, are we crafting with the special use conditions that they could only serve in that area?
No. So, B5 is already a license on the books. If you were to approve the special use, then they would go to the Village Board simultaneously, at the same time as their liquor license, where the Village Board would consider the special use, if the special use is approved, then they would re, uh, consider approving the B5 liquor license, and because it's going, because we are moving it, I believe, from four to five in our table of permitted licenses, that's a board action, so the board would have to approve that. And the B5 states for on-premise consumption, which, when you fall back to gaming, you can only have the liquor within the area of the gaming room.
Yeah.
That's it.
Not walking through the aisles.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, no other questions for the applicant?
Yeah, seems pretty cut and dry.
Yeah, straightforward.
So right now, nobody's in there right now?
I don't know. There's, there's an air sign.
It's empty, yeah.
Yeah, it's empty.
Oh, so it's a new thing you're starting, okay.
I do have a question for the applicant. So, you're before us to get a special use, you're gonna have video gaming. Hypothetical, well, not hypothetical, because you, you wanna, you wanna go ahead and do this, and we've got, already in that shopping center, we have somebody who has gaming, and down here at the gas station, we have gaming, and almost every one of our, our bars have gaming.
Right.
Um, they obvi, they're not here complaining, so, uh, I guess that's, I guess that's one thing, but say we get 10 more applicants who want to do gaming, uh, at, at what point do you believe gaming is, is oversaturated?
I mean, you see, people like to, like, we've known, we've, you know, obviously, we have a KFC place that are elsewhere as well, and there's some that have, like, three gaming places in one shopping center, and people just find different block, uh, different spots. So, I mean, I, I, I don't think it'd be an issue, I mean...
Yeah.
People want to try here, if they say, oh, they're not willing, they'll go to another. You know, the people...
Also like, like the bars, yeah.
Yeah, they'll go to different ones.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we, we do in Dundee, I think, have by far the most amount of, uh, video terminals per capita.
Yes, we do.
There's one for every 30 residents?
Yes.
We have over 100, we have over 100. Yeah, so, um, yes, and you know, yeah, anyway.
Yeah.
But, you know, and, and we can talk about this a little more, I think, outside the public, public hearing.
If, if you got a special use for the store, but no gaming, would you still be interested in doing the store?
Yeah, we'll still do the store.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's...
Yeah, I mean, that's for a priority.
Store.
And that's just something that we can all...
Action.
Right, yeah. So you're confident that the buil, the business would be successful, if just to work the store?
Oh, okay.
Okay, anything else then for them?
No.
Nope.
Okay, so, um, this one, I think, we, is, is a lot more cut and dry, yeah, I think.
Yes.
Yep.
Motion to close the vote.
I'll make a motion to close, I'll make a motion to close the public comment.
Yes, I'll second.
Myers?
Yes.
Feck?
Yes.
Kruger?
Yes.
Stannick?
Yes.
Scarpelli?
Yes.
And Brunner?
Yes. Okay, so, um, there are no additional recommendations from the staff on this special use?
Right, neutral positions, up to you.
Yep, so, so I guess, is there anything we would want to add as a additional, um, if we grant them a special use, uh, any additional, uh, restrictions or conditions, I guess, conditions?
I can't think of anything, because it's a liquor store.
It's a liquor store.
You know, that's a...
In an existing...
I think it's appropriate for the building that it is, you know, it's a, it's a regular storefront.
Yeah.
Joe, uh, what's the, uh, I, I can't think of it offhand, the, uh, coverage for the windows? We want to make sure that there's clear visibility inside the store and not, uh, ads for like, you know, liquor and cigarettes blocking the view inside, for a public safety perspective. Is there anything, do we have anything on that? I can't think of it, I wish Chris was here.
Yeah, there's, there's limitations for signage, so if all that gets added up, there's a certain percentage, but I don't...
Okay. So there, yeah, there is an existing code.
So there's...
That would have to...
Yeah, the building codes for that. Okay.
Did you want to make a condition on the gaming that Commissioner Scarpelli touched on?
I, from, from my own personal standpoint, yes. However, from the standpoint of, I don't believe that, I don't believe that government should limit, uh, free and fair trade, so I, I will, I will, uh, I'll hold off at this time, but I guess when we get into the Comprehensive Plan, I, I think that the, uh, that the Village Board should look at some, some amount per capita, or something to that degree. And if, when that, when that, when an ordinance of such gets passed, we may be over that, so the first couple to close will not promote, uh, somebody else from opening it up, but, um, I, I, I just know from having been a developer, leasor of commercial property that, um, and then I put in the email, Franco, to you, and, and you pass it on to the attorney, is that, I know Carpersville tried to limit, uh, muffler shops on Route 31, and they got their hands slapped. I know Carpersville tried to limit, uh, muffler shops on Route thirty-one, and they got their hands slapped. I know our attorney said that some things could be crafted such that, uh, but she, she did say having some, something concrete to put your, uh, lay your issue out on would, would help, and I don't know that I have anything other than, other than my own personal belief that we see more, more gambling going on in this state than anything.
Yeah.
That's for sure.
Yeah, well, clearly the way that it's set up right now, it's, uh, I think it's very low overhead for them to put these in. They make a lot of money off of them.
Yeah.
So, or it's just easy money, you know.
Well, and we shouldn't be considering financial stuff, but the village does get a license fee out of it, the state gets a license fee out of it, so it, it, it is somewhat low overhead, but they do have fees that.
Yeah, yeah.
Fees that they have to.
Right, yeah, I think we have, we charge like a thousand dollars a year, fifteen hundred dollars, you know, something like, it's all paid for in the third week of January. So, you know, but yeah, yeah, I think the comprehensive plan's the right way to do it, and that's where we can say, you know, we're gonna set our limit maybe at a hundred terminals in town, you know, and we move those around, and, you know, that's just what it's gonna be. Or we say that, um, we only allow them in a certain areas, you know, and you can have gaming-free areas.
Sure.
So.
Or you gotta have a minimum square foot.
Yeah.
The, the gas station has them, but, uh, I mean, their, their liquor area is tightly competitive.
Right, I think though, it's in the absence of having, you know, the guiding principle. That's why the board's pretty much approved so far. That's big, that's come in front of the, in regards to this. But yeah, I mean, really, there are a lot of people who, you know, will say the gambling is bad for society. Um, that's, there is that position, and having the high density, you know, leads to more problem gamblers. We've had, had someone come into our board meeting, you know, like from a gambler's support organization, and, and ask to have like a gambler's, you know, recognition, like a Gambler's Anonymous Recognition Day, or a gambler's, you know, it's, it's a thing that some people do, I mean, I don't think we've ever felt any of it here in East Dundee. I haven't, but that is a perspective that, that people have.
Yep.
So, but once again, not really relevant for, for today, but good for, I think, to have on record for the board to know that we're talking about this, and that we think that there should be more direction in the comprehensive plan in regards to gaming.
Like I said in the other memo that I would do, that you, the PZHC would ask the village board to consider Route twenty-five being the corridor. In this essence, I could say that the PZHC also asked the village board to consider a, perhaps a cap on the number of.
Video gaming.
Video, no, is it video gaming terminals or video gaming establishments?
Some about it.
We, through ordinance, had thirteen licenses established, and we have long since passed that. Really to the detriment of ordinance, and really the disrespect of it, because if you really wanna honor that law, you should. Either repeal it or change it. And we chose, I would, yeah, and that's on the board. And that's our, our fault. But if you want concrete, Frank, that's one that, that is why it's hard to block. And the thing it is, is that, and you made mention of the changes that we had over at the America. I don't wanna get on.
Yeah, I think if you talk a little bit more, maybe have it in the microphone so we can hear you.
But the fact of the matter is, is that we have had a bastardization of this whole gaming issue through people what they did at Blanks, people what they did at America Downtown, people what they've done at every other establishment that wants to. What are you gonna tell the guy who was sitting here when he says, I'm gonna offer potato chips, and I want a liquor license, while people are looking for a used car, they can spend their idle time while they're making their decision, gaming? How are you gonna, how are you gonna tell him no? There's been nothing that has held our feet to the flame with limitations on this, and that's to our detriment. We don't have to have all of this. Every business that wants to open up in East Dundee or anywhere else for that matter, asks you in their mind, for whatever reason, I have to have gaming. Why?
Yeah.
I don't get it. I was against it when I first listened to you, but.
Right. So.
Yeah, I, I will make a motion that we approve the special use, uh, to section one fifty-seven dot oh five oh F one C two, located at two ten Penny Avenue, units G and H to the village board.
I'll second it.
Okay, uh, Myers?
Yes.
Feck?
Yes.
Kruger?
Yes.
Stannick?
No.
Scarpelli?
Yes.
Brunner?
Yes.
And then Chairman Bruner, I would like to make a motion that, uh, we make a recommendation to the village board that, uh, they, uh, either amend or repeal their current ordinance regarding gaming, uh, and/or put some limitations in place so that we have some more guidance on what to do in the future.
I don't, yeah, I don't know if this is a motion as much.
Sure.
Okay, so, do we have a second?
I, I just need a little more clarification, just, I gotta write this, I gotta write this out. What exactly?
Well, you know what, I don't have to make it as a motion. I mean, you, you, you know what the issue is. If, if, if staff can just follow up to the village board that, uh, and obviously Jeff is here, President Lineum is here, he can, he, he can reiterate it to, to the board, but if staff would support him in that we've got an ordinance on the books that we're not following, and.
So I guess, yeah, withdraw your motion.
Yeah, I'll withdraw my motion.
Yeah, okay.
Never mind.
Okay, cool. So, um, then on to the findings of fact for this one. The, uh.
Oh, did you?
Yeah. Oh, anyway, we can make that. I can, yeah. So then, um, this one will be the six and the one. So, um, for this one, uh, do we, are you, you guys all have it in front of you, the, that these are all yasses and in harmony?
Yes.
Okay, no, no more discussion on this?
Yeah.
Oh, well, Steve, you voted no.
Yeah.
So I wanna, I, I guess.
You know, you can't really argue if you had a home that was right next to a liquor store versus a home that was around other homes, what, what the value would be on those two homes. So I think it does affect the.
The, the, the price?
Yeah.
You think.
I would, I would.
Okay.
You know, it can be a detriment.
Yeah, I mean, if there were people loitering and stuff like that, for sure. I think if it's just.
You know, I mean, there's people that complain about, you know, Bandido Barney's and the noise and things like that. But anytime you serve alcohol, you know, you're gonna, you know, you're gonna have people that might be too loud or, or.
Yeah.
What have you, so, yeah, I'm, I don't think you can really say that it doesn't affect the surroundings. You know, it, it could.
It could, yeah.
And, and you know what, Steve, I, I would a hundred percent agree with you, and, and however, there is, the liquor store business, according to our code, is not permitted anywhere. It's a special use in every zoning classification. So the problem I have with that is, is that we don't permit liquor, I mean, every liquor store that wants to open, or every liquor establishment that wants to open, has to come before us to get a special use. If it was a permitted use in a district, then I, we could say to the applicant, well, you gotta go find a place to rent up in this zoning district because that's where it's permitted. But our code is such that it's a special use in every district.
I was curious why we're voting on it, because it seems just a business that's going into.
Right, but yeah, if you, if you look at the table in the, in the allowable uses in that, in the B one, the B two, and the B three, it's a special use. It, it doesn't seem to be allowed in the, in the, in the B four automotive district, cause it's, it doesn't say permitted or special, it's just blank.
Yeah.
So, but, uh, any, any liquor establishment has to get a special use to be anywhere.
So what is the classification of our, like, of Dolly's, of the other gaming places there? Do they, I mean, they have a liquor license, right? They have to.
It'd be a special use.
Yeah, so they're like a, a bar?
I believe it's a B five, the same type of.
As this?
Yeah.
So I mean, that would be.
So that'll be like the whole strip mall.
Yeah.
At, at some point.
Yeah.
It's gonna be saturated.
Right, 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 but I mean, I think.
Known for, hey, you can go to East Dundee, there's plenty of liquor stores and gambling.
It would be like.
You guys are free to go. We're, we're talking about something.
You don't have to stay.
You're all done, and you have to go before the village board.
Yeah.
To the point of the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, yeah.
Eighteenth, you have to go see the village store.
Right, right, yeah. I mean, I was just gonna say, with this, this being a B five and like Dolly's already being there. You know, I would say it is the, would be a, a valid, I think, counterpoint to your incentives. There is already a liquor store there.
Right.
But, you know, it's different.
Neighbors objecting to it, you know.
Yeah, well, I was kinda hoping that.
Nobody has shown up for that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Bring that to light.
So, are you okay with, I mean, the rest of us all wanna say yes for these?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so.
Yeah.
So findings of fact? Yeah, you know, if we, do we wanna put in any type of dissent from?
I'll put it in the minutes.
Yeah, if you wanna vote no for, against it, you can, of course.
The majority is yes, so.
Yeah.
It is yes.
Okay, then could I have a motion to approve the findings of fact as written?
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the findings of fact.
Second.
Myers?
Yes.
Feck?
Yes.
Kruger?
Yes.
Stannick?
Yes.
Scarpelli?
Yes.
Okay. Yes.
Yes, please.
Seeing as we have no other business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Yep. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Your non-motion carries.
Thank you, Franco.
We can have one next one?
He's like our guide.
Yeah, I, oh, I guess that's, that's.